Six of us. Pursued by Governor Healy's March twenty nine two thousand twenty three, your body's over. Spanish Service Commission to handle these laws. The address thirty eight, seven eighteen. Meetings in the virtue of those who will school this school may be conducted by any person and enrolled through March thirty four, two thousand twenty five. Agenda items listed as recently anticipated by the chair, not all items may have that be discussed. I am not listening to the product or discussion to accept permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, School Committee Recorder, and other members of the public. That will be brought in. While the parents are approved, we will be a public proposal for our website. Let's start with the goal goal. Bill, well.
Present.
And.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Bonnie.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Diane.
Here.
Cory.
Here.
And Richard's not here yet. We will be looking at slate and Steve Dan is present. We have in our packet. Set to us minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty three, in May eighteen, two thousand twenty three. Your motion to approve. Motion to approve. Uh, second, second, the motion and a second by the goal. Is there any discussion?
And one question on the May eighteen.
Yes.
It was page seven, communication study. It said. Four school committee members rescinded. I didn't know that was talking about a survey of the. Eight of the twelve administrators responding fifty two.
I think it's also respond and answer. Yeah.
Yeah.
And there were no way that's managed. And there's one sense. Anything else? Roll call. Bill, vote. Hi. And.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill, yes. Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Hi.
And I, June arrows. Two down to four. Okay, uh, would you like to start with her, the. Uh, roses and thorns, uh, and then. And then we'll transition to the students who are going to talk about the various visits and and trips. Uh, so, uh, Maggie, what's.
Yes.
What's going on?
Okay, so, uh, I would say that there are definitely less thorns in the word our last meeting. Um, I can't think of any off the top of my head, which is good. Um, and then, um, a rose, I mean, um, the sophomore. This government is still having their silent auction. Um, and, um, if you want to, you can go to the site, there's some really cool items there. And, um, um, there was, um, a portrait of a graduate, um. Student kind of facilitated meeting during advisory last week, I believe. And, um, portrait of a graduate, um, participants will also go to the middle school a little later. Um, next week, I believe, um, to introduce the concept to the middle schoolers. Um. About what I can think of. Thank you.
About baseball.
Oh, yes. Yes, the boys baseball won.
The boys?
The boys.
Oh, boys, very certain of boys.
It was.
We're having to.
And is lacrosse happening today?
Lacrosse won and boys baseball both won last weekend, so that's been near the girls. Some of them went to their first round of states today, three hours ago. Uh, boys baseball had their first round of the states home on Monday, so that'll be really exciting. Um, we also have all things senior happening, so we had prom last weekend. And that was at Jacob Spillo. Uh, the students were amazing in all of their dressed up outfits. Uh, they were with the whole venue was fabulous. Uh, Tara Consolati did a lot to help, uh, with the event coordination, and we really appreciate all of the work she did to help out with that. Um, and I think a great time was had by all. We have graduation on the horizon this coming Sunday, so I hope many folks join us to celebrate our seniors, so.
Yeah.
Cool. Sure. Um, yeah, lots of stuff going on at the middle school since we last saw you. We had our orchestra and band concert, uh, which was well attended, really nice. Two new, uh, band and orchestra directors did a really nice job this year, so it's a nice company event. We have seventh and eighth grade dance are, uh, uh, one of many this year, so we're back in full swing. Social activities, uh, really well attended, also nice by students, but also by staff, so it was fully connected, bring everyone together and, uh, celebrate our oldest kids. Um, last week, um, lots of things going on. The Du Bois Legacy Project took a trip to New Mass Cambridge to visit the Du Bois Archive. Did some research and also had lunch at their amazing number one in the nation cafeteria, which was great. It was really nice to see some seventh and eighth graders, like wow, this is what college is made of. Yes, that's all about the food. Um, and they liked the research too, so they got to work on some primary documents, uh, at W Du Bois. Learned a lot. Um, last Friday, amazing, we had Carl Walters visit the school. Um, she's a former WNBA star, but give a really great message about overcoming adversity for her especially. It was about being like, she's like six foot six or six foot seven and growing up super tall. Um, and trying to understand what it was like going through middle school, being that different. Um, just a great, that was fifth and sixth graders and seventh and eighth graders, and she actually hung around to answer some questions. The kids were really enamored with it, uh, did a really nice set of crew lessons leading up to it, and also after, so it's kind of what we like to do. Uh, making these kind of visits meaningful. Um, fifth and sixth grade, uh, book club took their trip out to Smith College and the Smith College Library and, uh, had lunch out there, so it was really nice. Um, and the seventh and eighth book club is having that trip tomorrow. Uh, the sixth grade goes to French Park tomorrow, was their kind of social field day they do every year, it's just a lot of fun. Um, for them to just celebrate their community and their and their culture. Um, there's just a lot going on, and then next week, I take along with, uh, three other, uh, staff. Uh, we're taking twenty five students to, um, Philadelphia for the Du Bois Legacy Project. We're gonna connect with the school that visited us in twenty eighteen. We're gonna celebrate Du Bois and learn a lot about the legacy in Philadelphia, as well as a lot of things we've been studying, so it's kind of a common project. We're working on the students for past four or five months, so really excited about that. Great.
My turn, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so I apologize for missing the last meeting, but it was for a good reason. We had our international native captain. Um, we increased by, I think, seven acts, um, this year. Um, so that was a new one. Uh, that's our second E and U, thanks to today at Johnson for reaching that. Uh, we have a couple of things going on. We had, um, we have grade one musicals that I heard last week, they were adorable. Um, they were all, um, the wolf and the three little pigs, variations that were very, very cute. Uh, we have, uh, three fours coming up. Um, there's this next, um, Kim divides them up. Uh, grade one by itself, but in the others she combined, uh, over concerts. And we had a return of safety day this past Friday, which was fun, um, until Greg, I think, fire got called. And then half of our displays went out the door, but, uh, you can see me out of, uh, probably our biggest thorn this time now, but within all of them, end of year stuff, or we're not.
Great, well, I actually have a couple of things at the, uh, district level. Um, obviously, uh, Monday was Memorial Day, the band did a really great job in Stockbridge. Uh, and we did the whole marching thing in Stockbridge. Uh, ceremonies were wonderful, like included with, uh, uh, hot dog lunch and baked goods and stuff. So you had to come to that, uh, come to Stockbridge next year, it's really nice. Um, and then it's great, right? And then, and two communities doing great, and then in West Stockbridge, there were, uh, there were ceremonies, but, but no parade in the veins. Uh, it was also, uh, it was also theirs, so that's a big deal. Uh, all sorts of hiring stuff is in process, and I don't have an announcement to share yet, uh, but, but probably will on. On Monday or Tuesday next week, we interviewed, uh, I have a number of people for the Director of Learning and Teaching position. We'll share that soon, and then also interviewed a number of people for, uh, the Instructional Coach position, and we'll share that soon. And then we have, um, uh, an interview scheduled next week for the, uh, family liaison, uh, physician, so, so we'll share, we'll share that as well.
And the library, and we're pretty close.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Good. And, and there are other positions that we're also trying to fill, a science position at Du Bois. Uh, and I think those interviews are about to be scheduled, uh, a special education position at the high school. Uh, and middle school, uh, and, uh, a number of, of faculty professional positions. Uh, so that's, that's really good. Uh, what I'd like to do now is, is transition to the next thing. Uh, we've got two of our frequent flyer students back. Um, and I, I know them well, because I jumped in a Pacific Ocean with them. I'm not saying they go to crap, but I don't prefer any photos of them to share. Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, let me, and you come up, introduce yourselves. You can sit at the table, you can stand wherever, uh, whatever, uh, makes sense.
Hi, I'm Hannah, where I am being sophomore, and I was fortunate enough to go on the San Diego trip.
Um, yeah, I am Hannah LeHoltz, and I'm also a sophomore at Monmouth.
Yeah, and so it was the two of us and the two others, you two, um, both of our patrons are gonna be here today. Then Dr. Dylan and.
How many of their capacity? Um, I think, no, there were five total of those, so Dr. Dylan as well as Mr. Weber, Miss Ivy, Mr. Wright, and then America from River Street Youth Project, Jordans as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, but it was a really, really awesome experience to celebrate for it, and we got to, he's in school, Callan Mission Vista High School. And their schoolness is super centered on the student experience, the student, um, personalized learning, and that. High schools are a place for students to grow and flourish and develop their own personalities, that then they can use all those talents and skills and bring those out into. The broader world, and it was a really cool environment, it's a California school, so they actually didn't have hallways, all of the, um, rooms were separate. So they were just little cubicles that were connected, didn't have doors, and then everything is outside, which is really nice to be able to do that while you're there.
Um, yeah, so it was like, um, it was very good experience going on, and then some of the biggest things that, um, we took away, or that I took away. Uh, was the first thing is just like being in that school and you like just felt this feeling that everyone wanted to be there. Everyone knew what, like, why they should be there, everyone had something that they wanted to achieve. And then every single student that I spoke to was like, everything they had to say about the school was positive, and they were all just like exciting to learn. Uh, and like just their school culture was something that, and I think that monument should definitely be striving to have. Uh, and it was just really nice to see people, you know, like excited to learn, excited to be at school. Um, and then another thing, I believe I have that for us, but.
Sure. Um, I also think that on that idea, like everyone wanted to be there, it was because everyone felt as if they were part of something, they were part of something that was really gonna help them as they progress in their school careers, and that was like really inspirational. Um, I also, obviously, this school had so many resources, they had over sixty five clubs. They had a TED Talk club, which was one of my favorite, where students actually got to run a whole TED Talk and have a little red carpet, a little spotlight, and that was really cool. We got to see practice for that, and we got to go to classrooms. Um, and I think the group last time took away these three week points, which I'm actually gonna flip server, so I don't know what's up. But. Oh, so one of these, the school had a really cool graphic program, graphics and art programs, so everywhere there were these huge gorgeous posters of all the different things, their pathways, for example, were in every classroom, the mission statement, every classroom. So it was also that the entire school had this why that they all felt, and I believe their lives were, do you know what it was? It was me. It was the over.
Very small.
Yeah, it was an overarching message from why are we here, what are we doing, and everyone really believed in that. So as we were discussing, well, we want to bring back to monument, we want to bring back what is our why, why are we here, why are our students here? How can we contribute to society through this school? And, um, that's kind of work that we started for our graduate, um, and we're hoping maybe some of it to say that to our teacher, for the whole.
Community.
Um, another thing that we kind of set upon as the main goal was to focus on our English language population, which is.
Um, yeah, so we, kind of the only thing is that, um, the school in Mission Vista did not have a large English learning population, because it is a school that has, isn't able to have. Like other schools that specialize in, like, teaching kids English. Um, but we kind of realized that our ELL program is definitely an area of need of some improvements. Um, and so there were just a couple of things that we were hoping to achieve. Um, one of them is a kind of a buddy program between ELL students and then students at Monmouth who have taken like a more Spanish than happen. Than in the, than in the Monmouth school. And so you pair, um, one student from Monmouth, two Spanish with an English learner, and then they were just helped that English learner, like, get involved in clubs, sign up for sports, just. Become a member of our community, because like unfortunately, what you see with the ELL population at a school is they're kind of put in a classroom, and they don't really understand much of what's going on. They're not really involved in clubs, very few have ever involved in sports. And, um, we're just like honestly, they're very other, um, and so that's something we really wanted to change, and I've been working on that, um, with Miss Peck, the ESL teacher, um, as well as Cindy Rubia. Um, and then, um, I think America, I reached out to her a little bit ago, she was working on, um, this little short, um, handbook that just kind of goes over. The what lives is love at Monmouth, as well as all the community partners that we have here in the Berkshires, like then River Street, the People's Pantry, CHB, everything like that, and distributing that to. All of the English family families. And then the last thing that we were hoping to do, which we haven't made too much progress on, but, uh, it was just maybe, um, creating a language acquisition program. Um, so that any Englisher that comes into our school spends the first year with us learning international English, and then they're put into the MACT grade curriculum. Um, and another, our, our, we'll put it in a way anyway, so the one, the one, and then our last one is we make the one Maslow comes before Bloom. So Maslow is basically psychology, um, like, what's the word, pure numbers, um.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nancy. Um, and then Bloom's task on the, it is based about education. And we have this idea of when our students are being met at Maslow level, we can't help to achieve anything from the level. So at this school, we hear a lot about failure, which is just part of our, in general, a part of any community, and they really embrace it, and we're ready to say, this didn't hurt. So we stepped back, we reevaluated, and we began something new, or we fixed what hadn't worked. And we thought that was all really honorable, and we think that that's something all of us can implement, especially, I know I do a lot of student work in the school, and. There were several times where I'm working out too, and the answer is that I'm giving a lot of attention to something that's super valuable. Um, so that was a big takeaway, and overall, I think the school is just such an amazing place to be. The students and the teachers all have this compassion and this energy for one another. Um, and I think another big kind of takeaway I had was everyone is going to enjoy school if they have a place inside that school to enjoy it. Not everyone's gonna enjoy the same classes, and we've got the same teachers, but if you have a centralized place where you're like, I'm excited to go to school because I get to see this teacher, I get to go to this class, I get to learn this thing. That's really interesting, and I also think that that's will be learning very relevant for the students. So, um, for example, in their, like, biology classes, one of those science classes, they also went to the hospital, and they did, like, practice what they were learning, they saw it in practice, which I felt was really cool. And, yeah, I don't know that else, but it was really awesome, we got to partner with a lot of our schools, went swimming in the Pacific. Dr. Dylan was the only adult that was a little bit of a class. Um.
Was cool.
It was.
Uh, just, yeah, thanks really to, to, um, and welcome. Do people have any questions or, or things that they share that you'd like to cover a little more?
Okay, this is cool.
It was, there were sixteen hundred students, so it was much greater.
Yeah, could you repeat the name of the school?
Um, Mission Vista High School, I'm pretty sure.
And it's a choice school, right? And yes, yeah, it's not a neighborhood school, everybody gets to choose to go there.
Yeah, so it's not heavily stringed, but there is a, uh, application process.
Yeah, they were, they, we asked a couple of questions, but I don't know if we found out, and it, it's not like no, what we've. I think what the bottom line was is like no one is being like denied, denied entrance, everyone just passed above, or like, yeah, this is my name, this is where I live, I want to go to this school, and I'm like, okay, great.
So it's all kids wanting to go.
Yes.
They, they make conscious choices.
Yeah, it was just obviously.
All right, can I ask about, uh, something that's come up in Massachusetts? The, uh, DAS is starting to examine the use of cell phones by students.
Hmm.
In this school that you visited, how did they have cell phones?
Yeah, so it, that was also another thing that we found, um, amazing is when we walked into a classroom, like in that hall, I think we each saw six different classrooms. And out of all six, in everything, I only saw one person that had their cell phone on their desk. Everyone else, there was not a single cell phone inside, everyone was very involved in the work.
And, and it wasn't, like, it wasn't district mandated? The, the principal or secretary had bought people those, uh, cell phones, shoe racks sort of things, so those were there. But, but they weren't full with phones in every class, sometimes they, they're young people, headphones in their pockets, and they just didn't take them out.
Yeah.
And, and in some cases, there were those, there were those.
I definitely noticed more of those in the younger grade side, uh, that I went to, so the question was the whole class that was like, okay, there are some phones out. But I also, I asked my core guy, which was, who was a senior, I was like, what is the phone policy at your school, which is a phone policy? Because at this one, that's just the environment, people are so engaged in learning that they don't feel the need to go to their classes, which I know is very, very, work for that.
Thank you for, yeah, thanks. Uh, so we'll be sharing, uh, more on this, it, it was also a big conference and confidence that other students wanted to, and a couple of other students were actually playing. Uh, to, to continue to do, uh, site visits and sharing, but what, what was it that you passed on? Uh, I think there were maybe eight or ten other. Uh, uh, school and district communities there visiting from other places. So a couple from New Hampshire, three or four from, from Massachusetts, a couple from Connecticut. So you don't have the opportunity to, to visit Mission Vista, but then we get opportunities, uh, to talk, uh, uh, across different districts. There was a time when all the superintendents got to sit together and talk, all the students got to talk, all the parents and parent base owners got to talk, all the teachers got to talk. Uh, it was really, it was really well structured and, and, and organized, so I, I hope we get to do it again and say, and, uh, the people.
So Maggie was one of our students on the Rhode Island trip, and she was actually prepared to share.
Oh, good, maybe tell us, you can sit there, but tell us about, so what happened? Rhode Island was more of a conference than a school.
Yes, it was, hold on, sorry.
Good, thanks, Christine.
Um, sorry, I missed my phone, so, um, uh, so to, like you said, like this was more of, um, like conferences, like mini conferences, um, rather than like a school tour. But it was a school redesign in action conference in Rhode Island. And, um, it was an opportunity for teachers and students from all over to just collaborate and talk about, um, what we both need to, um, better the school. And, uh, we talked about rubrics and student teacher collaboration within rubrics, and just finding something that works especially for, um, a specific class or subject or whatever is necessary. And, um, uh, we talked about the best way to introduce change, um, to students as well, and kind of shifting, um. Into like the precision to basic learning or something like that, a big change that affects everyone that some people just don't know that much about, and just like making sure that like everyone has the information they need. Um, and can feel, uh, like if not positive, then neutral about the change, knowing everything about like why it's happened. And kind of like Annette and Hannah were just saying about like knowing like why, like a purpose for learning, because that is what really motivates people to learn and makes it interesting, is knowing. Why we're learning this, and that it's not just busy work and that it's interesting. And, um, uh, equity versus equality was a big one as well, um, in the turning anti racist thoughts into anti racist action conference. Um, and making the classroom a safe space along with that, um, just on the basis of race or like, and minor degrees, um, and whatnot. And, um, uh, it was really interesting to talk to, um, teachers from other schools, because it, and it was like gratifying to know that, like. We're not the only ones like going through change and stuff, and other schools are doing this too, and everyone's just trying to figure things out. Um, and we hope that more Monument students will go to this conference, um, in the future and present. And, um, basically, the goal of this conference was to just bring those ideas back to Monmouth and start, um. Like creating a more equitable space, um, and inclusive space throughout the school, and just letting everybody know, um, like what's going on and stuff, and, yeah.
Great, thanks. Question. When you, right, that, that, this, uh, means really interesting, I hope you, you have the students come and share it.
Were those classes leveled, or are they missions based? Would the classes, would they level out for?
They, 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 it, Christie, do you want to?
I missed the question, did you?
Oh, you know, was, was this, were the classes in Mission Vista leveled or tracked? And, and I think they were mixed ability groups.
Yes, to my knowledge, they are, I think, I think very.
I thought that said that in the pamphlet, so it was me, that they are. What?
I think, were there large classes?
I, 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 I think like i- i- in, in, in advanced things, like everybody did beginning band, and if you worked your way up, you, you could do like that really complex. Wasn't always a lot like, like music production, and you had to do beginning music to be ready to do music production, but. But I think there were largely mixed groups with, with maybe some, some, yeah, an interesting thing was it's a really cool schedule, and, and I like, I don't have a, a chart of it, but. Uh, they do, uh, many fewer classes, but in a much more compressed time. Uh, so i- i- if we were to do an AP class a year, it'd be, um, um, uh, a, a period a day and a couple times, like a double period of our drop schedule. But they do, we would do it for the whole year, they did their AP classes in, in much longer periods, but in a, in a semester, and. They did their AP classes in in much longer periods, but in a in a semester instead of a whole year, which isn't totally what you're talking about. Um and and particularly was, but they AP exams are in May. So if you take something from August to January, then you're not, that content's not fresh. And then you're taking something in May, it's it's presents a whole other set of challenges. But if if you took something in the second semester, uh you were really well well set up.
I thought I read in one of the pamphlets that the social studies teacher who teaches primarily AP, but under the the. There was a change going on, he talked about the challenges of taking what he teaches and. Hitting other, I never used the word level, he said, and doing other things in the class because of the various types of learners. You know, it was kind of like a euphemism for what you're 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 talking about, but um it seemed he found, I liked it. Because he said he found it very difficult at first, and then he had to really concentrate for a good year on how do you make this adjustment? And he felt according to the students' feedback that he was making the adjustment.
So I I think part of it was really neat for us to visit that school is you're doing a lot of the things we're doing and you're like five years ahead of us. So so to to. Maybe still struggle with stuff, they have other issues, they have other problems, but but to see somebody who sort of. Largely through the gauntlet on the other side of it as as a notion of where we might be going. Uh was was very compelling and empowering. Other questions or comments? Um we'll keep doing it and and if if we if we do another visit there or someplace else. Uh if if some school committee people want to join, uh we'll we'll bring some school committee. So there was uh some districts brought either PGA parent people or school committee members.
Wait, I have a question for Chris.
You start right there. Very good.
I really do, I really do a question. Chris, can I ask you a quick question? Do you do you have, do you have takeaways that are different from the students or are they kind of aligned with with what they just talked about? From your visit? From my visit to Mission Vista, like they they talk about their takeaways.
In two thousand nineteen when I went?
Oh, you didn't go to Mission Vista? No, oh, sorry, I thought you went to San Diego, sorry, okay.
Keith was on this particular.
Well, yeah, I I was on it, I with their change, sharing is, uh at the end of the thing, um they gave us like. Uh an hour, hour and a half to deserve, come up with our takeaways from the visit and. Uh the nine of us did that together and then we had to present that to the seven or eight other groups, we had to give the other group. So what they presented is is.
The group's takeaway.
Is the group's takeaway.
Perfect.
Cool, uh so the next thing I run a little list of things in my report was uh the college post-secondary report. And I'd just like to to share that at the next meeting. Uh we're we're running a longitudinal report on uh college um uh matriculation and other post-secondary opportunities. Uh and and there are few students who are still on the fence, and I'm just using another week to to pull that together and share. Uh what was really interesting, and I was talking to some, oh, it's me and Tori about it, the I I feel this year more than ever. Um a body was 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 mostly the the students made really remarkable matches that very closely align on their values. So we always get excited if if the students get into this college or that college or the other. But I think people were really deliberate and really thoughtful about what they were interested in. Where they wanted to study, what the right environment would be, um and I think that's where we're talking. So at the next meeting, I'll come back to you with with the list, but I did want to emphasize that.
And also suggest good college counseling, right?
I I I think good college counseling, good individual uh work, um the the. Competition in colleges are mind crushing and untenable right now. And and I think if you if you make choices aligned with your values, hopes and expectations, you're likely to succeed as more. So I I think students put in a ton of work, they got a level of support from school staff, but also. Um um uh families and other people, and I just think they worked out really well this year. Uh and everything from from um kids going to to Dartmouth and Cornell and to Wayne and Davidson. To kids going to Leslie Valley Community College to continue vocational work, to the soccer school, agriculture, to art, music schools to. Uh what was I just talking to the parents today about, one of our graduates going to Cooper Union. Uh and like growing up in New York, we used to walk by that, and our parents were like, one day, you're really smart. You know, it's really cool place and it's like mystical holiday, it's also a freak spirit. Yeah.
I think that might have been a new parents' month.
Yeah, we're, I mean, so the whole, the totality of it's really neat and 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 young people on athletic scholarships and. And other kinds of scholarships and and the uh Air Force, the Air Force Academy, you know, the range is just really cool. So I'll I'll share a report next week. The other one is just scholarships things, we're at the the senior scholarship today and I threw it up on social media, but. A a thing, and this is not college-based scholarships, but our community-based scholarships were a little more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That we'll give out today, so they're family-making scholarships, there's the Rotary Club, there're Condi, there're people who used to work in uh. As a food services and a custodian, of course, the pure man's. Uh and and like all our own kids' needs were met, so we sold their house and use that to endow a scholarship. Uh a number of people who said they passed away too early, so they named scholarships after them. Uh it was remarkable and uh um and it was really neat or. You you sit there, Chris, you probably know who's getting what, but none of the rest of us know, parents don't know, kids don't know. Uh and and one by one, almost everybody in the room was was recognized one or or multiple times, so. So really proud or or really generous uh community.
Yeah, I just, I did the head version before, came to someone to tell you, it was over seventy percent of those students were recog- the seniors were recognized today. It's coming to the awards.
They is in, many of them are tied to sort of means and income, so uh so some number of students. Uh may not be recognized because they're they don't.
So I'm sorry, just to get, so do the parents know if their kids are not anyone before they go to there? You know, okay.
But it's it's a celebration of the. I recognize, it's it's always a special morning.
I also do, I want to share, of the students that don't, some of those don't because they haven't applied for anything.
Right.
Right, and some of them don't because of what they're choosing to do after high school.
Yeah.
Um so, you know.
And I think I'll like, there's lots of ones sort of tied to veterans, fire department, police department, so the. The whole, and some are tied to athletics, some are connected to music, some are connected to uh art. Uh and 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 some are some are school-based. Really, really neat. Any questions about that? Okay, so the next thing is uh an updated co-curricular guidelines. Sorry, guidelines, right? Not a policy, it's not a handbook, uh a number of people uh worked on this. Um they find it, it's really worth the thing, uh everybody did, uh it's really been. Um four years since we last updated, but quite a bit longer since we significantly updated their. Their red marines throughout, uh some of it is is uh recognizing the change from mine and value that you divorce. Uh some of it's trying to be uh more aligned with our shifting uh policies. Um I think that this and I accept we did uh really nice work on it and. And I think the challenge going forward is getting this in everybody's hand, uh explaining it to people and then. Uh supporting and supervising the people who um who support this one. This is a little icon, this document is all sold by the school board, this is our policy, it's our key, a lot of it, a lot of it from school board, it's our policy. It's not a racial policy, but it's owned by us and it's working the job right. And the fact that there's a major religion or religious speaks to what that document is. And um it it did your absolute right, now there's also the exact majority of this follow, and this hopefully they have it. I don't, I don't like to mention, I don't think it was due, but it's our expectation that if there's a problem with this and if they want it, it's not. If it's called a legal document, the reason it says so in here, if there is something in here that. Staff feels that jury change can even have this school ready, we will look at it, but it's otherwise, it is part of the system we follow. So um let's take a moment, do you have some changes in the document?
Have a look.
Have a second?
Tenure.
Question, uh Gordon, Gordon started by at this section.
Um on page seventeen, the school attendance for attendance in the athletic. Guidelines requiring attendance on the day of the activity and the student being in attendance by nine AM. I'd like to know what are the repercussions if that is not the case? What if the student is not in school at nine AM, is in at one o'clock? Then um what are the, there's no, maybe, I don't want, again, Steve, you're right about micromanaging, but what is the policy? If a student athlete does not come in at nine o'clock?
They they don't.
That day, that day. Says again, that day, they they don't come.
So then that should that be stated here, that if you do not, if if this policy is not adhered to, the result will be. Like if there's a game on Friday night, they came in at one o'clock Friday afternoon, they were not playing that game that night, so should there be some sort of? I I I don't want to get into particular.
It says on the day of the activity, it says on the day of the activity in red.
But it doesn't say what happens to them if they don't come in at nine o'clock, what are the repercussions?
But it doesn't say that about any of these other items either. What if somebody doesn't?
These are reported, these are all reported.
Executions. Okay, uh so this is, so does that mean that human forces?
The athletic.
Okay, you guys are better at talking than I am, okay.
That's pretty well enough, then, okay.
From what I understand, that's done over at every meeting that athletic has, okay.
The the hope was that this cohort of guidelines was out over or distributed, so students aren't, and parents are not surprised. There should be no surprises.
Okay.
Anything else?
I would just like to thank, especially everyone, especially Sharon and Gordon, for the absolute love of work that they they did and the time that they put into it. Um really appreciate that.
Okay, I'll go with that, yeah. So I have a moment, I have a second, but we'll call both. So, yeah.
Hi.
Jason, hi. Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah? Will, yes, Diana?
Yes.
All right.
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I agree, so again, thank you for. So the next thing we shared uh put us together is a resident involvement now. So in the previous school, we were asking, who asked, with someone?
Jason, there you go.
So Jason, this is in response to your request and in um um really uh concrete terms, what's what's going on with. Uh school choice and and kids coming in and coming out. And and the uh really good news is with uh one small exception, the the net difference is much more in our favor. Than is is against us, so if you look at it, you see the SDRs, the summer semester, uh we receive one hundred and thirty-four of their students and we. Send them thirty-nine hours for a net uh uh difference, a positive difference of thirty-five students that that we get from their. Uh their five tenths, and it goes down uh uh all the. Oh, um the the one that is major sort of virtual schools, though, they they exist virtually. So we can't get students from virtual schools, we can only lose students from virtual schools. But and then uh uh subsidy is 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 broken down by uh by grade level. Um and 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 then their their tuition numbers. Um and 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 a smaller work, it's sort of private and and working schools. Uh and it's in the last page, uh there there fourteen kids, their district placed in private schools. And now we can fully be for a student with really unique special needs. Uh if if we ran this report longitudinally, you'd see that it's it's fourteen students now across all the grades. And and fifteen years ago, we invited closer to eighty students, right? So uh we're we're doing a, and we exactly work right, but but we're we're doing. Very well in terms of needing as many kids' needs in district as as we can. Uh and and then there are uh uh small number of families that choose to homeschool. And in Massachusetts, homeschooling thing's sort of weird, so the the principal and I sign off on homeschool plans. Sort of to check the rigor and veracity, but we don't really have any uh authority to to actually bear our eye on that. For you much, much.
So thank you very much as you're at at the line this, and maybe I'm going one, but I didn't know, to be able to have it all on one page and see it. And they have, you know, I I kind of knew the numbers, but I'm actually just like. Quite surprised how how few we're sending out, um considering all the different districts and all the options people have. I mean, we see, you know, overall, the great news about, you know, who we're, the product we're we're providing. And just seeing, you know, getting it all on one page, a real huge, thank you, thank you, Sharon. It's hard to hold work, it's an absolute.
Uh and it was one, we just sort of more of our, I I. The state sends us the thing called the cherry sheet, which is sort of our funding's base on, and it was very easy. Maybe I'll print that out for everybody to. To look at the last fourteen years longitudinally and um and our our choice numbers just get better and better. Right, like the net gain we're getting uh in in communities around us, it's not often the case. Which I like to think speaks to the the quality of what's happening in our schools. Um the the last thing, my part is the uh regional school district planning board, it's back, we're just talking along with a really interesting. Two plus hour meeting the other day, um and there was an uh agreement and actually a vote on um. Uh funding plan, right, as part of the overall thing. Uh unfortunately, there was some issues with the links, so the link. Unfortunately, there was some issues with the links, so the link for the members of the twenty-four member board was by. The link for the audience of the other people, not of the board, was, was corrupted or modeled. So the, the group decided that because that opened it up to a potential immediate complaint. That the, to our meeting that resulted in a vote that we're gonna have to have, I wasn't another to our meeting to do it all over again. But, but at a future meeting, we're, the group's gonna vote on, on that again with, with links that are, are tougher. And then the group, again, I just, by the way, is that the vote was not close. So re-voting is unlikely to change the result.
Right.
To one of the horsemen.
Yes.
And, and then I think after, that's what happens again, that, that it's highly likely that, that the, that board will vote on a full. Package, the draft regional agreement, and then vote to recommend that goes to the voters in, in the eight towns sometime in, in September. So lots of, lots of progress there. It's, this is gonna be, we won't have town meetings until, until October. Obviously for a few weeks out over the summer, but there are two more meetings planned in June. And we're, we're still talking along, this, this has been a three-year process and whatever the outcome, it's not for lack of trying and for lack of preparation. It's, it's been a lot of work, but it is.
Can I ask Steve, this question comes up, I guess, maybe I just don't get it, is the towns all have to vote for it? So state has to be able?
Not necessarily. When I, I'm just on.
Yeah.
So that is often asked and, and the answer that we've heard is that it doesn't have to be all eight towns. It could be some subset of towns, seven. There would be an expectation that with Great Lakes and Sheffield, the two largest towns would need to support it. But if one of the smaller towns didn't, then the group might. Need again and say, we're not gonna do an eight-town agreement, we'll do a seven-town agreement. That could then encourage the other town to potentially. Repot to do over, or then they might be compelled ironically to do a tuition agreement with the other seven towns.
How do you break up, both our districts have. Corporations breaking up, like you mentioned, so. If Great Lakes votes against it.
It won't happen.
We won't, we can't have, we can't break up our district.
A little model, right, that's what was always my thought, right? I'm being fooled by other people that it is possible as long as the major towns have a major financial support. If I, if I continue your logic, then, then the remaining towns in either of the districts would have to. There'd be more steps, right? So if, if one of the five towns would vote, the remaining four towns would have to release the town to then draw them back in potentially to a tuition agreement. Most of them are landlocked, I don't know where else they do a tuition agreement besides.
So, so that, that's, it's, it's muddled at this point, on my mind, maybe not other people's. Okay.
And maybe actually you and I should just be, the, the councils or the corporations.
And does the town meeting have to be a simple majority or two-thirds, whatever?
It is a simple majority.
Simple majority, okay, so we can pass on on both the town meetings.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
The danger not to the case on several of our. I would say maybe, or I would like, we would almost be able to agree on the principle. That we would ask the council, whether group plus Jake, and Lucy to come and speak to us.
Yeah, do another update. Right out there to show some of it in the air.
Okay. So I think that's it for the line of this report. The only, I want to share is, at, at the next meeting going forward, as Miles will start coming as that transition happens, it takes a voice. So next is self-every reports, policy, there's not that, we have a policy that's starting to meet. So around the moment of sub policy, I am the head of the various departments. And that's the moment. So, Kevin, second, so Jason and Bill just.
Just a question, is that new requirement?
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, Bill? Bill? Sorry. Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Nine.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill? Yes, Diana?
Yes.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich? I and I, it's Anne's. This is Bill's environment.
Has not.
Superintendent's.
We just met and we've been trying to get a evaluation done in the next month.
Excellent, excellent. Bonnie's is not that, it's a quiet time of year. So we're, we're finishing up negotiations with both of all groups of cooperative, we're going through this name, the cooperative group. So we're finishing up the co-op, cooperative group, which is food service, custodians, maintenance, technology, AV, what was that thing? Okay, those folks. So what is our practice is when, when we. Are in negotiations, the bargaining group votes first on it and then when, when they vote for it, it comes to the school committee and it's not the votes on it. So, so that's the first group, the second group is Unit C, which is. That are the paraprofessionals, the secretaries and, and as part of the negotiations that they're. Going forward, we call them administrative assistants, we're secretaries. The three directed studies supervisors and. Very good liaison, and, and I think that's it, so. I think I can say this without, it was something trouble, fruitful collegial. Negotiations and, and we're excited to bring it into you after. There's a little mind-mandering language, getting clean copies to them and them voting on it and making. Just the process is, we wait for the bargaining to go down. We'll have an executive session before our meeting, maybe next meeting, hopefully all goes well. And then at the meeting, we'll all, all, all figure out about this too. And there'll be three-year contracts and next year we'll be, we'll nominate the teachers, but this will be good to get behind us. We started this one late because it's a busy year. And a couple nights we met, or a couple of weeks we met on Monday and Wednesday or.
Or Marches.
Mon, Monday, no, it was one, one, Monday and Wednesday, another reflection. So we met, we met a lot and, and it was very, yeah, it was very good, it wasn't, not like for, for, for our number one. So two things that, that I'm really excited about. Bedlam Young Tab is joining us as a high school pre-k teacher in the mountainside program at the high school super program that Jack Lloyd is involved in. What's really interesting about this is, is today she's a paraprofessional. And, and so I think she's our most recent paraprofessional to come through, become certified as a teacher and, and set into a teaching position. So we're totally psyched about that, right? And, and, and she's worked with this age group before, she's actually worked with Jack before he moved out to the high school. So we welcome her in her new role and we hope she's one of many paraprofessionals who, who takes the leap of faith and steps into the teaching world.
The other one is Karen. I'm sorry, who is pre-k teacher hyphen, on a regional high school?
Yes, so we run a, a pre-k program in the high school. And it's a, it's a pre-k program in and of itself, but it's also a learning laboratory for our high school students who are studying early childhood education. And, and it used to be very part-time, which was okay for us, but not great for families. And now we're expanding it from three sort of half-days or shorter days to five full days, which works for families, actually gives our. Students more flexibility in their day to be involved in it. And, and that's, we've had a burden, right?
No, Dave Edens from the state was with us last week doing his final walkthrough with us to move us forward in the chapter seventy-four process.
So, so the, now we've got, I don't remember the answer, the next one will be early childhood, we hope to hear about that the next couple of weeks. And then we'll have three platinum standard chapter seventy-four, and then we'll start working on the fourth. So really excited about that. The rest of it's fairly straightforward and then the list of vacancies and things that are going on. I mentioned most of them, we're still in the process of looking at school psychologists candidates. But, but hopefully by the next meeting, most of these positions will be.
Okay.
We also put on our table, Keith, and there's some of the default data, some of the meeting following up that meeting that we have, you know, maybe six weeks ago. It was very hard and we were worried that that one here to talk to us. Yeah, we'll, we'll make time for that, we also want to share an update on our work in, in that category, I'm hoping. We've got some really good internal data that we want to make available and share. Sure, this is my wishes.
No, this is the most exciting report.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a typical transfer for ten more for tax applies and most people in that school. These are typical operational changing need type transfers. We have been my mid-year, I mean, also closed out insurance accounts. Some salary accounts that are taken care of that weren't at the beginning of the year. Again, things settle out, people are reassigned, new people are hired, teacher resign. And so in order to keep those accounts clean, I do those transfers. And then we did one to balance the facilities accounts, Steve has a lot of projects going on this year, so we have to move some money there. And then the final was to move the money from the contingency account to the strategic timing account for the communications work that's now in the process. Questions?
Do you have a moment?
And questions?
No.
Most of your group did have a transfer report.
Second, so what was your second question?
Are there any significant balances or any accounts that aren't being transferred on this report, and just wanted to counter those?
Um, therefore, I am doing the fourth, starting the end of the year closed out. There are not a lot of significant balances, really there are, the big balances are in transportation because we are finishing that. We had a balance in the health insurance because we had a premium holiday to move that into contingency. And then as every year, we have some larger negative balances in the special education professional services fees and tuitions account. And excuse me, those typically get cleared at the end of the year using the server. So I thought it would be this year, and we haven't really done it in the past, we do it as part of the budgeting, was to. After the middle of July, which is when we run our clothes out of morning, is to bring, bring a budget to actuals report.
Ah, that's okay, that's perfect.
With different visuals, you know, anything overfed, underfed, kind of.
That's awesome. Perfect. Anyone else?
Yeah, probably won't take obvious, because it closes us in July.
I'm walking, another thing I'm, I'm, I'm sure you can back what's the work, I'm, I'm, you're working on, what is your base and or. And your program is playing.
Now that negotiations are over, I can give some time for.
You guys like it? They're, they're two sort of big trends, it's possible there's more than that, it's the, the identification around. Parking and driving on the campus and what we're gonna try to do, and make that better.
We're chasing for, we're chasing for the. We don't have film on too, they can have.
And, and then, and it's nice that the state's working on it too, but, but it's, um. A lot of this is about just like common knowledge around cell phones, but the certain, again, host report. Which I'll send another link around, it's pretty provocative as, many people are talking about sort of ubiquitous cell phones and social media. Maybe being sort of more complicated than how tobacco was misexplained to people a generation ago. So the, the embedded dangers of cell phones and social media, particularly tied to. Their fashion and other things, warn, warn real attention. So I, I don't think we should, we should jump to do something too quickly, but I think we should see what's happening at the state level. What we can do and, and outline some steps while we, while we work to a, a deeper plan.
Could we do that in regards to the, the state of operating, laying out a graph?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think, I think. I sort of want to.
Will?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Jason? Nice. Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Diana?
Yes.
I'll say yes.
It's all prepared for all Diana's.
Yes.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich? Yes.
Good or?
Yes, well, it's, it's, it's all right. I must be distracted by. I wanted to, I wanted to switch to go back to it with Bill this time. So I said a meeting last week, the commissioner was there, and I don't think individual schools get a million dollars. I think they're, they're making a high a million dollars and, and we can apply for some sort of relatively minor rate to study and implement some changes. And, and they make you so unhappy looking for us and, and I have a range of possibilities or, or options. And, and there's that present tension between the perceived need for people that have phones around safety versus the. The all-consuming distraction that it is, right? So if people have phones and they left them in their pockets and they use them in an emergency, that might be fine, but people have a really tight time, leave it in their pockets. So we'll, let me see, so what is issue from the commissioner's office? And we'll, it almost might be like a recurring topic.
Yeah, that's true. I, I like what the Worcester representative on the MASC, and Massachusetts Association School Board is. Representative Worcester Tracy, you know, she, she said, let's be careful here, there are some good things. About cell phones that can be used educationally, so she's, she's kind of like, let's not jump on the bandwagon and go drastic. You know, you can't have cell phone, once a school is doing that, they're collecting. You know, you can't have someone, one school is doing that, they're collecting the cell phones, they 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 set up the meeting. That's they collect the cell phones at the beginning of the day and the teachers lock them. So I I was looking at this and I said, gee, another role the teachers will love to play at the end of school. They have to go unlock cell phones. I'm sure, you know, teachers, they don't have enough to do besides that. So I think we have to be careful of looking at, okay, you know, the 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 popular trend might be, get rid of them. Wait a minute, let's see how some schools do that policy and and is it draconian? What are the advantages of having cell phones besides the?
So what was on the agenda, we'll start with that. Any old interview business?
Yes, a request by faculty member to amend calendar to make a final last day of school rather than the earliest last day of school because there is sometimes a gap based on snow days. And a lot of the kids are gone by that earliest last day of school. So they're, they wondered if we could amend the calendar or we could make a last day of school and then give back days as they're not used rather than.
We're hearing.
Early.
Oh, that's past, yeah, right? So we're, it's also a terminology.
Yeah, I think, yeah. So so so. So there's a one on how that's the last day of school. That's a big help, so.
So you're so, this is like some of this. So it's almost giving back.
So this year, we're trying to.
It's it's an interesting idea. What what's what's sort of weird about it is you're not allowed to be in school for a hundred and eighty days from a student's perspective. So what they're asking us to do is to make their calendar that has a hundred and eighty-five days, right? Which is against their own contract, which says it should be a hundred and eighty days. Let me talk to council about it, and the intent of it is sort of brilliant. The practice of it might be problematic, right?
The other problem is that there, Miles is, well, we've had more than five snow days. So that, you know, if you have more, I mean, five is just a random number, if you have one of the five, you're going past that.
No, it doesn't get taken away from like.
Yeah, well, that would be up to us, but. It can, that's happening.
And we've gone past the five days.
My principle says the way that we are with with weather these days, we're not having more than five snow days. And I'm just gonna like, I'm tuning the scale a little bit. I'm tuning the scale, but like, the first snow day, I call it four inches at the right time, does it? The fourth snow day, like, it needs to be twelve inches. Yeah, let me look at that, it's a really interesting idea.
And I think the way to do it is to have a hard last day and then for every fifth day passed by, we'd take off of April break or April break, you couldn't even do any other ones and then.
You could just not settle on a break and then give that back in March when you realize that like. But we're sorry, I want to be your secretary.
Anything else in their full window of business? All the comments. Seeing the whole of the comments. And any motion for the works of the negotiated chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-three. All three persons, so the urgent motion of school, school, the executive, the executive, the executive, and the outlet, thirty-eight, section twenty-one, made in the plea, to assess strategy, to distract the negotiators. Only this is settled and then on the seventh, may have been done on the other occasions. Following executive seven, the school going to go with Eric, we go not for Eric on the second. Do I have one? Some of it, go second, second. On that, we'll, on the numbers, Bill. Uh, yes. Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bobby.
Hi.